Good evening. Welcome to the December 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals. The format for this evening, anyone wishing to testify, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, the applicant, or their representative will address the board and provide evidence supporting their proposal. Members of the board may ask questions during, before, during, or after the application. Following that, the chair will open it up to the public to speak to the proposal, and that will include any written comments. All comments or questions, the applicant will go through the chair. And following that, the applicant will give an opportunity to make a final statement, and then the board can consider closing the public hearing and move to a vote, or keeping the public hearing open for a continuance of the meeting. We have two matters before us this evening. Seventy Casey Street, case 25-24, request for a special permit. I'll read the public notice into the record. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on December 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. On the request of Mark Troka, case 25-24, with respect to the property located at 70 Casey Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general residence zoning district, the hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. The application requests a special permit pursuant to zoning bylaw section 5.4 to construct an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming home. The addition increases the habitable floor area more than 25%. The home is currently non-conforming inside and front setback. The proposed addition includes three additional bedrooms, baths, and additional living space. Any zoning relief that may be required and inheritance to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application, the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and may be requested by emailing calmdev@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This meeting is being recorded by GoToMeet and by Norwood Community Meeting. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Sir, if you could approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Mark Trokey, contractor. I live in Plymouth, Mass., 44A Russell Street, and I'm doing the job for the Dumases on Seventy Casey Street.
Thank you. Welcome. Tell us what's going on, sir.
Well, I applied for the permit, and I got kicked back by the building department, saying stating 5.4 zoning, and I had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. But you said 25%, but I was reading in the Norwood bylaws, and it's redlined, and it says up to 75%.
That was a proposal that was put forth that failed the town meeting.
Oh.
So we wish it had passed, but it didn't.
Yeah.
So that's why you're before us.
Yeah. Well, my only concern is, the addition is all conforming. It's all within the setbacks.
Yep.
And many houses in that development are close to the lot lines. So they're just going to enhance the beauty of that neighborhood.
Yep. Anything else?
And that's it.
Sir, do you have anything? Is the applicant?
No.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Just say here, in case we have any questions. Shannon, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. What is the percent increase of the living space with the addition?
I didn't get the actual percentage of the increase. That was calculated by the building inspector. But I have about approximately 350 square feet added to the original house. But everything else is in the conforming section.
It looks like from the plan, maybe the existing drawing spaces, 730 square feet?
Eight hundred. I think it's 836.
Okay. And then the addition, do you know what the addition's worth?
The addition, it's approximately 1,700 square feet. That doesn't include the garage.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So it's over 100%. So even if the 75% passed, you would have been with us.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's okay. Shannon, anything else?
No. My only other question is if the applicant has heard anything from the neighbors at all?
Just good things. I talked, and he said good things. They were all excited about it being built on.
Okay. No other questions?
Thank you. Paul?
Just how many bedrooms exist in the house now?
Two bedrooms.
And how many will you end up with?
Before total.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a wonderful improvement. I think the plans look great. I mean, no more questions. Have you outgrown the old house? Is that the...
Yeah, we just had a kid. Trying to grow the family.
Congratulations.
We're running out of space, for sure.
Yeah. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay.
And they want to stay in Norwood.
Yeah, we love it. We don't want to leave.
Good. Rachel?
I'm just looking at the elevations on the last page of the plans, and I just can't tell just by eyeballing it. Is the addition, it looks like it's a little bit higher than the height of the current structure. Is that right?
I'll have to look at my plan. I think it's in conformance of the height restrictions of the town.
Yeah, it just...
It's probably a couple of feet. I don't... It's 2910 is the total height.
Of the addition?
Of the addition. And the original house's height is... It's about 2711.
Okay. So that's... I don't have my dimensional right in front of me, but the 29 is in conformity?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it looks like there's two... The front elevation, it almost looks like there's two front doors. Is one of those being removed?
One's a setback. One's a setback. It's a mudroom or something.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay, yeah, those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything, sir. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this proposal? Is there anyone in GoToMeet that would like to speak to this proposal?
I just actually have a question.
Yes. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Jennifer Cudaro, 327 Wireroom Avenue. I'm actually the neighbor directly behind them.
Okay.
I guess my question is, are you going back towards my property line at all?
According to the plan, the new addition will be 77 feet off of the rear setback. If you're behind them, presently, it's 99, but you'll still have 77.8 to the property line in the back, which surpasses our requirement.
Okay. So 77?
Yeah, and presently, it's 93, 99.3.
Okay, 99.3. Okay.
Anything else?
That was just my question. No, that was just my question.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here in GoToMeet that would like to comment on this applicant? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. If there's no further comments from the board, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Shannon?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
The addition is, you know, increasing the habitable floor area and therefore increasing the nonconformity, but it is building on sort of like the open area of the law and isn't further encroaching on any new setbacks. And there's even the neighbor to the right of it, the house has set back a bit, so it does seem like it won't be right on top of any closer to where the people are living in. And it sounds like we haven't had anybody come tonight and express concerns. So it looks like an attractive design and would not be out of character for the rest of the street.
I'll take that as a motion to approve.
So moved as presented?
Yep. Seconded by Paul.
I just think, this is G, and it has a frontage of 90 feet, but it looks like there's 75 here, so I just wanted to be clear on the necessary relief that...
It was always, in the reading the notice, nonconforming inside and front setbacks, but you're also saying it's nonconforming on the frontage.
I think that may have been in one of the details, too.
Oh, okay. As long as it's clear that we have a comprehensive relief there.
Yep. Good catch. So noted that it's also in nonconforming in regards to frontage. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. On the motion?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
And I go, yes. Good luck. Good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Do I have to inform the building inspector? He's right here now, but we have to type up a decision, and I'll sign, and the city clerk will sign it. And you know there's a 20-day appeal period, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Good night.
Good luck.
Okay. The next case before us is 558 Pleasant Street, case 2525. I'll read the public hearing. Notice into the record. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Norwood will hold a public hearing on December 2nd, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. On the request of David Hearn Jr., S.Y., representing Josephine Cordea of 558 Pleasant Street, LLC, regarding property located at 558 Pleasant Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, in the general and the manufacturing zoning districts. The hearing will be held at the Norwood Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Norwood, MA 02062, and will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests to appeal a notice of violation and imposition of fines issued by Norwood Zoning Enforcement Officer. The violations referenced are section 3.1.5-G3, open lot storage in the general residential district and the manufacturing district; sections 3.1.5-K4, parking of large commercial vehicles in the general residential district; and section 10.1.2, failure to obtain written confirmation of a conforming use of the property prior to engaging in that use of the property. Any zoning relief that may be required and inheritance to the Norwood zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application, the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and may be requested by emailing cpg@norwoodma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Good evening, Mr. Hearn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, it's David Hearn Jr. of Gellman and Cabral at 30 Walpole Street here in Norwood. I am here representing 558 Pleasant Street, LLC, which is a Massachusetts limited liability company that owns the property of 558 Pleasant Street. With me this evening is Josephine Cordae, who is the current manager of the LLC and has been since the time her father took ill, about two years ago, not quite two years ago. What is before you is an appeal of the decision of the building commissioner, as evidenced by a notice he issued in September, on September 26th, stating that for violations of section 3.1.5-G3 and section 3.1.5-K4, fines were due, apparently from the property owner and from the then-removed tenant, Velazquez Brothers Construction Company, in the amount of $56,400. I don't speak for Velazquez. They're gone. They were a problem, they turned out to be a problem tenant, and they created a great amount of problems for the landlord, my client, as well as for the building department. We are appealing, the landlord is appealing the order of the building commissioner that the LLC is in violation and is responsible for the fines. We contest that. Now, I submitted with the application a narrative to lay out the facts of the matter, the history of this matter, and I submitted a memorandum that I hope you folks have regarding the position of the appellant in this case. The brief history, my client, and my client's the LLC, but I'll refer to Ms. Cordae also in that way, entered into a, what's referred to as a lease agreement. It was, in fact, a Tennessee will, there were 30-day terms and all that, with Velazquez Brothers, by an agreement dated, I think, March 4th. The tenant actually didn't really move in until May, early May of this year, to a building that is an outbuilding, is a separate building on the property at 558 Pleasant. 558 Pleasant is a big house at the corner of Dean and Pleasant Streets. It's a residential property with three apartments in it, and it's been owned by the, my client was in the Cordae's family, her parents have owned it, owned it for many years. It's owned in an LLC. It has been for about seven years or so. And it has on it a separate building that at one time was a garage, but was converted to business use along the way. That building, the outbuilding I refer to it as, is taxed by the town as commercial property. It is listed on the assessor's card for this property as commercial use. Taxed that way, assessed that way, listed that way, the commercial rates of charge for the electricity for us to the outbuilding. It has been used as a commercial property or for commercial purposes since at least the mid-'80s, and actually, my client tells me, before then. The property itself is bisected by the boundary line between the general residence district and the manufacturing district. And I think some of you are familiar, we've had other cases down in that neighborhood where the boundary line between the districts causing problems. In this case, the present management, the present manager, Ms. Cordae, believed that this was commercial, could be used as commercial property, the particular building. She knew it was taxed commercial. She knew that it was, the electric bills were commercial. And she entered into an arrangement, a lease, we'll call it, and you have a copy of that, I believe is part of the application, that was a, that gave the tenant the right to use the property for two purposes, storage, office. So within the building, storage and office. And also made the point in that the parking was allowed for two vehicles on the property. That was the agreement. You have a copy of it. Subsequent to Velazquez moving into the property in the early part of May, Ms. Cordae learned from one of the residential tenants of the property, this was in the second half of May, that Velazquez had started parking construction equipment, doing open lot storage of equipment and materials on the site in violation of the lease agreement. She attempted to contact Velazquez, and it was late in May before she got hold of him, and she told him, couldn't do that. He's got to stop doing that, and that he should talk to the building commissioner. In June, June 23rd, I believe is the date, the building inspector issued a notice of violation that was directed to the owner, 558 Pleasant, LLC. That notice was only directed to the owner because I don't think the building commissioner knew who the tenant was at that point. Ms. Cordae got that letter from the building commissioner and told the tenant about it, and told the tenant, go talk to the building commissioner and get this resolved. What you're doing is in violation of the lease, and you've got to somehow resolve this problem you've caused. The tenant came back and told Ms. Cordae that after speaking with the building commissioner, he was to file an application for special permit. The understanding was, right or wrong, the understanding was, the grant of a special permit would resolve whatever the issues were that had led the building commissioner to issue the notice of violation. You folks, some of you were on that case, which was heard September 2nd and continued to the October meeting. Velazquez filed that appeal hearing day, September 2nd. I understand, I wasn't there in it, but I understand that there were issues, that you wanted a plot plan, you wanted him to provide some more information, it's continued to the October date. By that time, on or about September 23rd, Velazquez finally vacated the property. My client's been trying to get him to leave the property, actually, since she discovered the violations. She consented to the filing of the special permit application because it was something that might resolve the issues with the building department, but she still wanted him out. And she succeeded in getting him out, September 23rd. He didn't show up to the October meeting, nor did he provide a plot plan, and your board voted, I think unanimously, to deny the special permit. Following that, we tried to speak at that, and you allowed us to speak at that meeting in October about the fines, and you told us, talk to the building commissioner about it. Talked to the building commissioner about it. We exchanged emails, and he said, this is up to the zoning board to deal with. He can't change the fines. So we're here now because the building commissioner claims that $56,400 is due from my client, and perhaps also from Velazquez, for violations, two violations, open lot storage in the general residential district and the manufacturing district, and parking of large commercial vehicles in the general residential district. Those are the two violations that are being, that were noted in the September notice of violation that is the basis of this application or this appeal to you. Nothing about the third section that is referred to in the legal notice, 10.1.2, failure to obtain written confirmation of a conforming use of the property prior to engaging in that use of the property. That wasn't cited in the September notice of violation. It wasn't the prior one. And I'll speak to that in a moment. We don't dispute at all that what Velazquez was doing was in violation of the zoning bylaws. What we dispute is that the landlord, who had no knowledge of that, never agreed to that, discovered it, those violations, and told him he couldn't do that, Leo Velazquez, the principal of Velazquez Brothers, that the landlord should not be held liable for fines for violations committed by the tenant without the approval. They were not approved by the tenant. The lease was very clear what the use could be. The guy needed an office, and he could show some stuff in the office. That's not inconsistent with how the property had been used. That property has been used for commercial purposes on an ongoing basis since at least the 1980s, without abandonment, without a cessation for two years or more. The uses that are objected to, we agree, should not have occurred, but we didn't do it. The tenant did it, and as soon as the landlord learned about it, she told the tenant he had to stop it, and that he should deal with the building department when she got the notice of violation. So this client, you know, the building inspector in a prior note that he sent to this board in connection with the other case, seemed to stress that he had had problems with this property before with the current owner, when there was a case of a violation because the property had been leased to a towing company in apparent violation of the zoning bylaws. That was a lease arrangement that Joseph Barber, Ms. Cordae's father, entered into, not the present management. During the time that that was going on, and the violations had been noticed and issued by the building commissioner, Mr. Barber took ill, declined, and died. Ms. Cordae had to step in as the new manager of the LLC. She did that. She did a commercial eviction, which took several months. She got rid of them. The building commissioner told her in an email, when she said, look, I can't do anything about this for time being, my father just died the other day, he said, don't worry. The important thing is that the violations are abated, and they were abated when the towing company left. In the present case, without doing a commercial eviction, because she had seen the cost of doing that, the time it took, she was able to persuade the tenant to leave. And he was gone September 23rd, within three months to the day, I think, of the notice of violation issued by Mr. Pelletier. So the landlord did everything she could to get the tenant out. She did everything that was appropriate. She consented to the request for a special permit because the property owner has to consent to that so it can be filed, because she understood that that might be a resolution of the zoning But it doesn't seem fair to tag her with all of this. Now, in my memorandum, I mentioned section 10.1.2. The building commissioner states that it was a failure to obtain written confirmation of a conforming use prior to engaging in that use. The actual language of that bylaw is that the confirmation is required under 10.1.2 only when a building or a structure is erected, that didn't happen, substantially altered, that didn't happen, moved, that didn't happen, or changed in use. There was no change of use. It continued to be used for office purposes. Or when land is substantially changed in principal use. None of those things occurred. So there was no need, under 10.1.2, to go to the building department and say, can you, can we do this? Because we're not making a change in the use. The use was, and the use that the lease called for, is exactly the use that the landlord authorized. That's allowed. Now, under our use table, section E, office uses, an office for administrative, executive, or professional purposes is allowed as a matter of right in the manufacturing district. And also, a place of business of a building tradesman or caterer is allowed as a matter of right in the manufacturing district. Now, the question is, is this property in the manufacturing district? The building in question is located, as far as my client understood, within the manufacturing district. A plot plan that Mr. Pelletier included in his memo of November 26th, which we received yesterday, shows that at least a substantial part of the building is located. Now, I know that there was a, some sort of a snapshot of a map that the building commissioner included with his memorandum to the board. I see it in front of Mr. Sheehan there, but that's not exact. I don't know where that came from. The plot plan provided in connection with the 1984 proceedings is a lot more exact, prepared by a registered land surveyor, I believe, units engineering. They were from Brodkin. That shows that the building... Sorry?
It wasn't an instrument survey.
No, it isn't. But neither is, neither is the, Mr. Chairman, if I can speak to this.
Yes.
We're going to hear from the building inspector.
I'm sure we are. Yeah. I understand that. So at least part of this building, in the past experience, of the family with the building department had been reasonably cordial. A former building inspector had been in the property and understood what it's being used for, what it's being used for office purposes. This is, if it is a violation because of where it is located on the property or in relation to the line, it is a violation that occurred... relation to the line, it is a violation that occurred innocently, it occurred really in part because of the way, the understanding the family had. This is taxed commercially, billed commercially for electric purposes, listed as commercial property. So what's wrong with using it for commercial uses that are allowed as a matter of right under the bylaw? Now, another point that I referred to in my memorandum has to do with the calculation of the fines. The building commissioner claims $56,400 for 94 days of violation that are, and he's citing two violations, if you do the arithmetic, that's for two violations. Presumably, the violations of open lot storage and parking of large commercial vehicles in the general residence zoning district, both of which were not allowed under the lease, but which apparently occurred. Our bylaw doesn't allow for a separate $300 fine for each violation of the zoning bylaws. The language of the bylaw is that. Let me get the actual language in front of me, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Whoever violates any of the provisions of this bylaws, or any of the conditions under which a building permit is issued by the inspector of buildings, or a special permit or variance is issued by the planning board of the Board of Appeals, or the terms of decision rendered by either board, shall be liable for a fine of $300. Whoever violates any provisions of the bylaws shall be liable for a fine of $300 each day that said violation continues shall be deemed to constitute a separate offense. It doesn't say $300 per violation. It says whoever violates these bylaws is liable for $300, and it's $300 a day that it continues. Now, you can contrast that with the provisions in some of our sister towns where they make a point to say-
Excuse me, Dave. Let's just talk about Norwood.
I understand, but-
Whatever happens outside Ken, Westwood, has no effect on this board.
The point I want to make, Mr. Chairman, is if you want to charge per violation, you have to state it, as other towns have done. Medfield, Westwood, Dillon-
I don't need to hear what they did there.
Okay. But it makes a difference in the way this is being defined.
We'll hear from the building inspector when you're finished.
Okay. And I'd like, I hope they'll have an opportunity to respond, I know you usually allow that.
I always allow that.
So, this is a case we have. She didn't, Ms. Kudai, on behalf of the LLC, did not violate the bylaw. She gave somebody a lease that said what the property could be used for, and the uses that were described in the lease were consistent with the bylaw, consistent with the use table. If in fact the property is not entirely, the building is not entirely in the manufacturing district, she didn't know that. It's not completely out of the manufacturing district, as shown on Mr. Pelletier's, whatever that clip is from. According to the plot plan that was on record in that prior case, it was partly, it appears to be partly in each district. So, this is an unintentional error on the part of the landlord, the violations are the responsibility of the tenant, and we ask this board to look at the situation and see, these fines are far in excess of any harm caused to anybody in this case. The fines are double what they could be even if somebody had been harmed. They should not be the responsibility of a landlord who took every step that could be taken to get that tenant out of there quickly, and did so within three months of the notice of violation. And if the building commissioner wants to go after the former tenant, we're happy to help in any way. This is not, we have no love lost for the former tenant who caused all these problems. So we ask that the board make a determination that the appellant, the owner of the property, 558 Pleasant Street LLC, is not responsible for the violations that were committed by the tenant. A determination that all fines related to this matter be expunged or abated with respect to the appellant, the owner of the property, and anything else that the board deems to be appropriate. I would ask you not to hold Ms. Kudai responsible for the sins of her father if he entered into an arrangement a couple of years ago with the tow company that he shouldn't have. She provided the solution to that, and no fines were issued, even though that had gone on for a while. The fines were abated, the zoning violations were abated, and the fines were apparently abated. I don't know what is different in this case, this was resolved even faster. So, you know, that is what the case is about. And I guess the final point, which is a legal point, that the fines in this case can be no more than $300 a day, no matter how many violations there are, because our bylaw, in any ambiguity, is held against the author of the bylaw, which is the town. It does not say per violation, it says per day. So, that is it, we're happy to take questions, we're happy to respond also, and we'll sit here with the building commissioner.
We're going to hear from the building commissioner first. I just want to point out what you presented here is a plot, a mortgage plot plan note. This plan was drawn for mortgage purpose only, it is not to be recorded but construed as an instrument of survey, so this-
I understand that.
Has no meaning here. I just wanted to make that point.
But that was the basis, Mr. Pelletier submitted that, apparently as the basis of the 1984 special permit proceeding.
Well, I think he's going to address that because of the time that expired, the two-year limit, but I'm going to let him speak, thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to let Mr. Pelletier speak first. Mr. Pelletier, please introduce yourself, and you heard Mr. Hearn, please provide us with any information you can on this matter.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Gary Pelletier, building commissioner down in Norwood. Just some points, in no particular order, I just want to, I want to make some comments and a couple of corrections. Number one, Attorney Hearn stated that 10.1.2 was not cited in my June 23rd notice of violation, it most certainly was. It is, it was just below the definition of principal use, so it was cited. With regard to the violation, it's, and why there wasn't a calculation of three violations for 94 days, it's a one-time offense. You can only, you can only put something, you know, to rest once, if you catch my drift. The act was committed in violation by not conforming to the zoning, by not seeking clarification on whether the business use, which Attorney Hearn referred to as a commercial use, was allowed on that property. That is required, you either do it or you don't. Once you don't do it, that's the violation. The other violations are on a daily basis, and I disagree vehemently with Attorney Hearn because his argument is that you can violate 14 different provisions of our zoning bylaws, but you only, you only get penalized for one. So, that would be akin to running 14 red lights in a row, but you only get one ticket. So I disagree with him on that, on that matter, the point. With regards to the location of, first of all, this is an accessory building. It was never a principal building, it was a garage at one point. The records that we have show that it was used as an accessory home occupation, as a dressmaker shop for the owner's wife or mother at the time. And that's the only record that I have that, of a non-residential use. That building is either fully in the general residential district, as shown by our GIS, which my experience is that it's very accurate, or that mortgage plan, which shows at least a portion of the building in the general residential district. So, there's no business for commercial use that's allowed by right in that district. It would either be an accessory use, which a dressmaker shop from a prior owner, or any resident that lives there that qualifies under home occupation could be considered compliant there, or a pre-existing non-conforming business use that has outlapsed. No one has offered me any evidence to support that there was an ongoing legal commercial use of that outbuilding at any point. And I've been here dealing with this since, almost since my tenure, which goes back to 2022. So again, I just want to point to all of it. With regard to Ms. Kudai as the owner, and my records, from what I saw on the Secretary State's website, she's been a party to this property as long as the LLC has existed, became the resident agent in November of 2020, which is also when we were dealing with the illegal towing company. So, she certainly has some firsthand knowledge of what is allowed there and what is not allowed there. She certainly knows where my office is. And again, this is a second attempt, a second occasion where she entered, willfully entered into a commercial lease of a property that, number one, is not a commercial property, it's a residential property with manufacturing district in the back right-hand corner. And there's not, not every business use is allowed in that district by law. Or even, or even if it were a pre-existing non-conforming business use, it's not up to the owner to determine what that business use is, it's me. That would be saying that, you know, just because it was a commercial use there, you could open up an auto dealership, or a body art studio, or a cannabis retail establishment. That's not the case. That's why we have a zoning enforcement officer, that's why we have 10.1.2. It's the responsibility of the owner to make sure that the use of the property is consistent with our law. Again, didn't happen. As far, again, as far as the prime go, I didn't write the bylaw, so the fines are there, they're also consistent with the state building code and Mass General law, and fines are imposed for each violation, for each day that the violation exists.
Anything else, Gary?
As far as what was discussed with Leo, the, Mr. Velasquez, when he did come to see me, I told him, and I gave him an order, and I have it in an email, that the first thing he needed to do was he needed to move all of the heavy equipment and all of the lot storage 100% out of the general residential district, because it wasn't all allowed. And he needed to move it into the back right-hand corner of the property. He then needed to apply for a special permit to keep it there. And as long as he did that, I would stay any fines, but he had to go file, and he had to get approval from the board. He didn't do that. So as far as I'm concerned, they were never, the only reason that they were, that the fines were resolved, not the fines, but the violations were resolved, is because he moved out. So, he got 94 days of, you know, rent or occupation of the space illegally for nothing. And the landlord, I assume, collected rent during that 94 days, so the landlord paid, and the tenant got the service that he was looking for for 94 days, and it was both illegal.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Before we open it up to the board, Alice, I know you wanted to say something, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I will say.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I correct the record?
No, I'll give you a chance at the end, the board's going to ask questions now. Please sit down, Mr. Hearn.
Okay.
I always give you a chance at the end.
Yeah, I just-
Okay? There's always two sides to a story, so we'll give you a chance to address it. Okay, Rachel, I'll start with you on this one.
I guess this one is for the building commissioner. Is there a certificate of occupancy for the structure in question, and if so, what does the C O say as to use?
I'm sorry, could you state that again?
Who should I talk to?
Yeah.
Are you asking, did you ask if there's a C O?
Yeah, is there a C O, and what does the use say for that, like the structure at issue?
I don't, I don't have that record, I mean, the building has been, to Mr. Hearn's point, the building has been there for a long time. It's listed, it's shown as an accessory structure, and that's what it is, it doesn't have, it's not a-
Okay, excuse me. Hold on, Gary. I've let everyone speak, and I haven't interrupted, please don't speak while we're trying to answer these questions. Go ahead, Gary.
So, it doesn't, I don't have a copy of a C O there, I don't, I don't think that there's probably one in a file. The home is a three, is a listed three fam, that's according to the assessor's records, there is a long file about violations of the building code at that address, going back many, many years, but they're not prudent to this discussion. And again, that, the use of that accessory structure has been as an office, or a dressmaker shop, as I'm aware, but I don't have any other listed non-conforming commercial use documented.
And if I can restate the assertion about the use and leasing to a third party, is the issue that it's not an accessory use to the principal structure because the use is to an independent third party that's not resident of the primary home? Is that the issue?
Well, it could be, if it was someone that lived there, and they wanted to run a small business using that outstructure, that outbuilding, that's allowed by right under home occupation as an accessory use, if it qualifies. There's some conditions in that section of the bylaw. If this was granted, which it was, by special permit to be used as another business, as a dressmaker shop, and that business use continued, whether by different owner or without change, that fine, I just, I would need proof of that. So when somebody came to me and said, hey, this has always been a business or an office, I would say, okay, I just need something that shows me that. Attorney Hearn's familiar with this, we've had other cases in town, that he's represented the owners, he knows this, that we need a, we need a path, we need a continued documented pathway showing that a non-conforming use, which this would be, commercially used in the general residential district, is non-conforming. You would need to show that that continued uninterrupted for two, no more than two years.
And then I think at the moment, this is my last question for the building commissioner, but just to confirm that part of the concern here, and perhaps one of the reasons why you exercised discretion on the enforcement issue, is because this was an existing issue under a prior tenant, under a prior lease, and substantially the same issue arose with a new lease, with a new tenant. Am I following along?
Yeah, this shouldn't have happened again. We already established with the towing company, use there, the open lot storage, the parking of commercial vehicles, that that wasn't allowed, it's not allowed. If it was simply going to be a car, you know, parked in the yard, and an office use in there, and that had been pre-existing, okay.
And there's continuity-
We wouldn't have to that either, because they didn't ask ahead of time, they just moved them in. They just let them take up space, and there was heavy towing equipment and vehicle storage on site.
And there's continuity of legal ownership in the same LLC, it sounds like, with respect to both of those leases, including the historical one, but that, notwithstanding the conditions that may have arose under the prior lease not at issue, the current manager was the one that was in discussions with you to resolve the towing company lease related-
Correct.
Issues? Okay, a couple of questions for the-
Yep, yep.
For the...
Yep, a couple of questions for Mr. Hearn.
Do you have in your files a certificate of occupancy for that structure?
No, I don't know, I don't know whether it's a certificate of occupancy or what the 1984 decision had to do with some renovations or alterations to the building. I don't know if in 1984 the CO was issued. There was no work done in connection with, during the management of the current manager that would have required a certificate of occupancy in terms of construction.
And much seems to be made in the discussions about the two leases, and there was this prior lease with the towing company. I'm curious, we were presented with the lease for the Velazquez Brothers LLC. Was the lease for the towing company the same form? Was it a completely different lease? What, were there improvements made to the lease to address this known issue?
I'm not sure what the known issue was.
About the use of the property out of conformity with the bylaws?
The other conformity that I understand occurred, and I think Mr. Pelletier mentioned this, was the open lot storage of vehicles by the towing company. That was a lease that was entered into and handled by Mr. Barber, my client's father. Ms. Kordari was not a manager of that property from the beginning. She became a manager of the LLC in, sometime in 2023. She took over the management when her father, and dealt with the towing company problem that her father was in charge of, but then became too ill to deal with. She took that over late in 2024, late in 2023, when your father died, 24?
Yes, in January 2023.
So late in '23, she had to take it over because Joseph Barber was dying. She took it over and got it resolved. She hired somebody, they had to do a commercial eviction, after some months they get rid of the tenant. That resolved the problem. She didn't want, she had nothing to do with setting up the tow company in there. That's what I'm saying. She's being held responsible as if she's a serial offender. She's not a serial offender. She didn't, she didn't create the problem with the tow company.
I guess my question is, were there any updates made to the lease between these two leases? Because we've just been provided the one, and we're, there, an assertion is being made that this was being addressed and trying to be clear with, under this new lease.
What was, what was clear from the lease was that he could use it for storage in the building and office purposes. The guy told her he needed an office, so she rented it out for an office, which was consistent with the past use of the property by Mr. Barber some years ago, when he wasn't living there and had an engineering business going, and by other tenants over the years. The tow company thing, she had no responsibility for the violation. She did, she should get the credit for getting it resolved, and she did get it resolved after she took over management. But she's not been a manager of the LLC going back to the beginning. Her family's owned this property for many, many years, and in 2018 they put it in to the LLC. Her father was in charge of everything till he couldn't be in anymore, and that's when she stepped in late in 2023. So that's, that's the situation. She didn't do the lease with the tow company, her father did. The lease she did with Velazquez made clear what the uses were, and two parking spaces are available, presumably for him coming and going in a pickup truck or a car during the office use. Nothing, she, and as soon as she found out that he was storing equipment, the heavy equipment there, and doing open lot storage, she told him it had to stop. And that's who, she basically made a decision, she had to get rid of this guy.
You mentioned just now the parking for two vehicles. I'm seeing on the bottom of page two, there's also reference to one to three parking spaces of insured vehicles, one pickup truck against fence, no more than two cars in front of storage office space.
Again, within what she understood to be the commercial area of the lot, not going over toward the house. What Velazquez did, by the way, she didn't know, Mr. Pelletier has told us that he instructed Velazquez to move everything back over onto that side and to apply for a special permit, to move his equipment over the line into the area by the outbuilding. Ms. Kordari wasn't told that. I'm happy to hear that, because again, the tenant was told what had to be done, and she, she wasn't aware of that instruction. But the special permit, she became aware of the need for a special permit, and she authorized the filing in the hopes that it would resolve problems with the building department. She still didn't want the tenant there, and she was working to persuade him to leave, and succeeded, so.
No other questions right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
I just have one question at the moment, which is, on the first violation, you took a very aggressive action to remove the tenant, but on the subsequent violation, you didn't take a very aggressive action.
Well...
And would that have made a difference in the outcome?
No, I don't think it would have, because if you, if she had filed an action in the court to...
As she did on the first one.
It would have taken, well, yep, but in this case, if she had filed an action in the court, it would have taken longer.
That may be the case, but the reality is, it wasn't as aggressive an action as she did the first time.
I don't know, I mean, if you say aggressive, it was practical approach that produced a result that was actually faster than the previous case.
Yeah, but unbeknownst that it was going to be faster. It turned out faster, but the...
Well, I won't say unbeknownst. She'd gone through a bit of expense and delay with a court case. She persuaded him that he wasn't welcome there anymore. She got him to move out, and he was gone three months of the day after the building commissioner, while the, while the special permit case was still pending. You know, I think Velazquez thought he was going to get to stay, no matter what, because he was going to get a special permit. Well, he didn't, and I think he saw the handwriting on the wall, and he left in September because of her telling him he had to go, persuasion. Getting a court, you know, even if you get, if you file a case under this type of lease, 30 days notice, you go into the district court, you file it, you might get a hearing, you don't get the hearings as quickly as you used to, and then if you get a judgment, you've got to levy on it, send the sheriff out to levy on it, and take the landlord or the tenant off the property? That takes months and months, costs a lot.
No, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, so she got a good result.
But if I'm the building commissioner, and I need, I want you to resolve something on my behalf, and you did it a certain way the first time, and then the next time you don't take the same aggressive action, I'm going to sit there and say, cheapest, what, you know, what did I do wrong? I asked you to do something, and you did it what I believed to be the right way the first time, and now you're not doing it the right way.
But what's different in this case is that it didn't happen in the tow company case. In this case, the tenant was told he should file for a special permit. So while that's going on, you're going to let it run its course? Let it, let him try to get the special permit? It might resolve the problem with the department. Maybe they can resolve their differences if there's a special permit that's more specific, very specific, and the strong arm of the building department had come down on somebody. Then what happens when a landlord is trying to persuade somebody to go? So if you let the special permit come through, it might resolve it, and maybe she'd let him stay, but she was unhappy of getting dragged into this, into this problem that the tenant caused.
Yeah, but she's the owner.
She's the owner, but the owner doesn't have responsibility for the tenant zoning violations. The building code does not relate to this matter. I know that, that under the building code, an owner has an awful lot of responsibility for conditions at the property, but this isn't a building code case. The building code is mentioned 21 times in our bylaw and not once in relation to this type of stuff, all right? So that's, it's not a building code case, it's zoning code. So under the zoning, a tenant committed zoning violations, and she...
And she has no responsibility for that whatsoever?
She does.
Oh, she does, okay.
She tried to get rid of it, and she got rid of it.
I'm sorry.
And she, and she consented to the, to the filing for the special permit. She did that stuff.
Paul?
She did everything that she could.
Any questions, Paul?
I do. So is it fair to say, Mr. Hearn, that your client agrees with the building department that it's unpermitted? This is not allowed?
She agrees. She was upset to find out he was doing this and told him to stop it, and then the building department sent out a notice of violation, and she said to him, you've got to deal with the building commissioner. Yeah, she was upset. She didn't really want this.
So the answer is here, she agrees that this is unpermitted, it's not allowed there. Okay. Let me, let me ask you.
As far as those two violations.
On, on March 4th, 2025, she signed a lease agreement.
Yeah.
Page two, it clearly says, and this is her, your client's lease, no storage of vehicles or large equipment.
Right.
Yet all these photographs show storage of large... When did she find out about, I mean, these are things that you can't hide. These are very visible from the road. When did she, after she signed that lease, when did she, when did she find out about the storage of these vehicles?
Well, the question, first question is, when did he move in? And that was early in May. By, about the middle of May, she found out about these violations from one of the residential tenants. She doesn't live at the property, she's not there all the time, but she found out about it and tried to, and I stated this in the narrative, I believe, and in the memorandum, she took steps to reach Velazquez. He dodged her, she finally got him late in May and said, you can't do this, you have got to stop this, and, you know, we're going to have a problem. And then she hears from the building commissioner with the notice of violation, June 23rd, and she tells, again, Velazquez, go down and deal with the building commissioner on this, this is your problem, you created. Now, she wasn't dodging responsibility, but the person who had caused the problem, she sent him to the building commissioner. And, and she wasn't avoiding, she wasn't ignoring the building commissioner, she was taking steps with her tenant to get it done. But the timeframe, it was actually signed in March, but he didn't really move in until May, and when he first moved in, it was after he first moved in that he started bringing more and more equipment. I guess he was leaving some other location and started bringing more and more equipment, and she told him to stop it. So the March date can be confusing, that something was going on for months, it wasn't. It was a matter of weeks from about beginning of May to when she found out about the middle of May.
And when she found out, you know, through whoever, that he was storing, he was violating this paragraph of the lease agreement, did she do, did she serve him by a constable or file a notice to quit?
She told him, can't do it. So, look, if he remedied it and put the stuff back on the commercial side of the property, it might not be a problem, but she doesn't know all the provisions. But when it became clear that something had to be done, and there were two violations cited by the building commissioner in both of the letters, those, she, you know, cooperated to the extent an owner has to cooperate in the special permit proceedings. She wanted to get this resolved. She doesn't want the building commissioner being...
No, I understand. It's just, as a landlord, when a tenant is doing, has an unpermitted, you know, is doing something that's illegal, the first thing you do is you send a notice, you know, then you file an eviction. If I saw her all that paperwork in front of me now, I would feel like she acted in good faith.
I understand that, but she acted...
I'm trying to wrap my head around all that time that went by between the time the lease was signed in March and the time the building inspector got involved in June.
Well, let's compress that time period, because he didn't move into the property till the beginning of May. He didn't start using the property till the beginning of May, and the violations were not known to the landlord, excuse me, the landlord until the middle of May, at which point she told him he had to stop it. Some point, the building inspector became aware of it and issued the violation. We don't question that there was a violation, we question who should be held responsible.
I understand that, but I don't think the building department has any legal right to file an eviction to remove that tenant. It's the landlord that's responsible.
They can issue fines against somebody who is violating the bylaw, once they know who is violating, and it was the tenant who was violating. All the property that was violating the bylaw, all of the activities are traceable to Velazquez. And my client was named because the building inspector didn't know who it was, but he issued the second notice, he knew who he was dealing with, he named Velazquez in that also. And that's, so, you know, somebody can make a choice whether to go into court, and it was not a pleasant experience for her, she said, when she was in court on the towing company case, and very expensive, or find a way to get this guy to see the light and get out of there. That's what happened. He left. I don't know the details.
I just, I have one question for the building inspector.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Pelletier, if, once you found out about this and you sent a letter, had the, the landlord sent a, you know, a notice to vacate or started eviction proceedings immediately upon your notice, would you, would you put this on hold or would these fines continue?
Well, let me ask, let me just one thing first. So on July 8th, I sent an email after I met with Leo, and I reiterated what we discussed, as I explained earlier, that the first thing he had to do was move the vehicles out of the general residential district and move any other storage equipment out of the general residential district. I actually included a snapshot that I sent from the GIS, and Ms. Kordari was copied on that email. So for Attorney Hearn to say that she didn't know what we discussed, that's not true. She was, she was copied on every email after I issued a notice of violation. So he didn't do it either. So the violations continued. He didn't move the equipment out, he didn't stop parking trucks there, he took his time filing for the special permit, and then didn't get the special permit to eliminate the violations. So that's...
I understand.
Yeah, he basically just stalled us, as far as I'm concerned.
I see.
Any else, Paul?
No.
Shannon?
When was the first point at which Ms., I'm sorry, is it Kordari?
Yeah.
Asked the tenant to vacate the property?
When did you tell him to leave?
When I, okay, so I told...
If you wouldn't mind just coming up to the microphone. Just come up to the microphone. Say your name and address from the microphone, please, thank you.
My name is Josephine Kordari, 1153 Seagull Street, Millford. When I became aware by one of the tenants in the house that there's trucks parked there and everything, I was kind of confused. So I made my way down there by the end of that week and found a couple of trucks, a trailer. It wasn't anything that we agreed to, and it wasn't as bad as where it got. But I told him, all this has to go, you can't have any of this, okay? And it's another thing, he never once at any point told me, oh, I'm not going to do that. He said, you know, I need to, you know, the tires are, you know, flat on this trailer, I'll get it out next week, and then, so there was a difference between what he was telling me and what I started to see evolve over there.
I think the question was when, when your timeline, when did...
The end of, the middle to the end of May, when I saw it. We signed in March. April, he started to bring a few things over there in the office building. I didn't see much use at all.
Like, when did you, you said that you were trying to get him to leave?
Yeah, oh, yes.
When did you ask?
So the end of May, when I couldn't get anywhere, the middle of May, I started to consult attorneys, I spoke with people that I knew could probably, you know, friends of my family can go and talk with him, and I started to look up and see how I'm going to be able to do that. But, yeah.
But you simultaneously told him to leave, but also go to the town to get a special permit?
So the special permit was something that happened in June, because I was, that had, I had nothing to do with me. That's something him and the building inspector talked about. I didn't find about it until later, and the way this tenant presented to me, English isn't his first language, like, I'm going to be all set. But as we started to progress from applying for the special permit and going toward the, you know, getting toward the hearing of the special permit, I started to see that he's not moving any of his stuff. I actually stated in that September hearing that he's not complying, you know? I emailed the department saying I wasn't in agreement with this. I mean, I don't, I don't know what you want me to do. I did the best I could with the person that I had there. He was dodging my calls, he wasn't meeting me there when we made appointments, he owed rent, he definitely, you know, owed rent, and the thing, and he was doing opposite of what he told me and promised me he was going to do. And then when the building inspector sent the letter that, you know, you're in violation this, and I said, I told you, now you can go and speak with Mr. Pelletier, he's going to tell you the same thing I've been telling you, I've done with this, okay?
So how did you communicate to him that he should vacate the property?
I told him in person, and I told it in front of another tenant, I told him that he has to leave, he has to... But that's, again, his, he kept telling me, I got to find a place, you have to go, you can't have any of this stuff, none of this is going to happen. And actually, from when he applied for the special permit, all the way to the day of the special permit... the special permit, you know, and I saw that his stuff isn't leaving, the special permit isn't helping me with the process for him to leave because of, you know, I knew, saw he's not complying, it, it, it just, it was very difficult to deal with. Very difficult. Promise is made, and then no, no action. I consulted an attorney at Bowditch and Dewey out of Worcester to see what I can do because he had handled a prior commercial eviction. And Bill told me that this is going to take probably as long, if not longer, to be able to get him out if you can convince him to get out, you know? Or if they just turn down that special permit, he's going to, he's going to go. He's going to go. Also, I, I was so furious. He tore up my whole lawn. I have a landscaper that was having a hard time with this. I have text messages to me, the landscapers and the tenants. This is absolutely nothing that I wanted, nothing that I wanted to do.
So the approach in consenting to get the special permit was in hopes that it would be denied and that would be reason that he would leave?
Well, the, so, the way he presented to me, that's going to solve his problem. But I know the town, and I've been in the town, and I know that the closer you get to that hearing for the special permit and the less you do about getting your stuff out, you're not going to get that special permit. So panic started to set in. Not only is he not going to get the special permit, I'm not going to be able to get rid of him, his stuff, and I was praying that he'd get turned down for the special permit, even though I had given permission just to apply. And I specifically said in the meeting, "It's on record that I'm not in support of the special permit. I'm here because English is his second language. I wanted to answer any questions that have to do with the property, that I'm not here to support the special permit." I did sign papers last, you know, last minute for him to apply, but I wanted him out. I wanted him out.
No further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I was at that hearing, and I did not hear you say you didn't want it approved. When we opened it up to anyone speak, you did not speak and say you didn't want him there, so it's, it's a contradiction there.
I said that I am here to answer questions about the building.
Right.
And about the property. I'm not here to support the special.
No, you did not say that. Because if you had said that, it would have been different. But that being said, just a question for your client. You've got texts from your landscaper and your tenants. Do you have any texts to the tenant telling him to leave? Is it all just verbal?
He had his phone shut off, and he had changed his number.
Emails?
He's not email person.
Letters, letters, anything?
No, it was all, it was all verbal. I can't get them anywhere.
All right, that's all. Thank you. I just want to, I heard the word office, and I know Mr. Hearn disagrees with section 10.1.2, but you have to look at, in 1984, the Board of Appeals granted to raise the roof on the second floor of the garage in order to put in a toilet facility in a storage area for my wife's accessory business of a dressmaker. And it was granted by this board back in 1984 to allow for a toilet facility in a storage area, as per plan of record. So there was never any approval, and you don't have a certificate of occupancy for an office, so I do agree with Mr. Pelletier's reading of 10.1.2 because it is going from dressmaker, storage shop. It is a change in a principal use without certification by the inspector of buildings. So I just wanted to point that out. I do want to let the board know this would require four votes, whichever way we go, and we have the right to enforce it, to not, you know, overrule the building inspector or modify it, or modify it if we feel there's been some egregious that does deserve some punishment, or we can just say it is enforced or overridden.
Mr. Chair, may I ask you a question, please?
Yeah.
To the building commissioner?
Yeah.
For the, to get to the 94 days of violation, does that include the period of time that the special permit application was active, or is that period of time not included during the violation?
It is period of time from the date of my notification to the time when I was notified that he was gone. Because there was no, he didn't obtain a special permit. We never, never got permission to store vehicles there or, or open lot storage. He didn't move any. So he was technically in violation of those two sections for 94 days with a blanket violation one, one time. It's basically a one and done of not conforming that that use was allowed.
Thank you.
I just want to ask the building inspector. So is it your testimony, Mr. Pelletier, that from the time that you got involved to today, the landlord has been aware of all the communications regarding this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Anyone else say anything? I'm going to open up to the public, and then we'll hear from Mr. Hearn. Okay, is there anyone here that wants to address the board in this matter? Okay, is, yes, please.
I have a question.
Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
I have a question for Mr. Pelletier, just because I'm new here.
Name and address for the record.
Jean Pometier, 18 Ridge Road.
Okay, yeah.
I don't understand what unpermitted open lot storage means, except I assume maybe it meant the vehicles he parked on the property.
Mr. Pelletier, can you address that question, please?
So if, and I can, I can see if I can pull up the definition in our bylaw of, of open lot storage.
Thank you.
Give me one second.
I have it here, Mr. Chairman. If Ms. Pometier wants to look at it.
Open lot storage is defined as storage of goods, equipment, materials, supplies, tools, or any other commodity on an open lot to the air and not within a weather-type building or structure.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Anything else, ma'am?
Gary, just clarification. I believe I heard someone say, maybe Michael Shant, say that there was a permit change made in the building a couple of years ago where a bathroom was approved.
In 1984.
And some storage for a dress shop.
Correct.
All that's inside, so that's not outside.
Correct.
So that's not open lot. So the, the tenant who was breaking the rules was putting things out on the lot.
Well.
In both instances, there was open lot storage of goods or materials, and there was also parking of large commercial vehicles in both instances, which neither is allowed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pelletier.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else here? Yeah?
Thank you.
Brian Pometier, 18 Ridge Road. I guess one of my main questions here is understanding that this is in a residential district, and hearing from Mr. Pelletier, he's talking about how this whole thing is owned, and this is an out, this is an outbuilding of a residential district. But there is a concern I have when I see something that's zone residential that's taxed commercial.
Well, can I just, this is a split zone, okay? So if you look at this half, not half, but the gray area is Zone M, okay?
So part of the, so this building is.
Part of the property is M, and this is general.
Got it. All right, so.
And how the, how the tax assessor assesses that is, is just the way they do business.
Well, I just mean that sometimes if, if the assessor will, will come in and say, "I'm going to consider this commercial property, tax it as commercial." Residential property tends to be considered commercial after a certain period of time. So that's, that's all I was thinking of there is, you know, to what? You know, if, if the, if the applicant here is presuming that they can do commercial business in this out, in this outdoor building or this outbuilding because it's taxed commercial, then, you know, you can kind of feel for them in that they, they shouldn't be held accountable for, for having rented it out under that preconceived idea. And, you know, it's sad that the tenant themselves, you know, did things that were outside of what the lease were, but, you know, I'm kind of like at odds there between, on the one hand, if it is residential, there shouldn't have been a business there in the first place other than, you know, as a, as an adjunct of somebody who lived there. But the, you know, on the other hand, if, if it is commercial, then, you know, how do you, how do you split that? Like, how do you know what part is, is it zone commercial or not? Is it taxed commercial or not? Is it, you know? So that's, that's my confusion. I don't know if Mr. Pelletier can, can clear that up in terms of.
Well, in 1984, it was approved by the zoning board for a storage for a dressmaker shop and a toilet. And that was the last record we have of it, and that might be the reason. But Gary, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Just, just again, that's, that's why it's the responsibility of the owner to make sure that their property is being used in conformity with our bylaws. We're, we're open five days a week from May to quarter. We're not hard to find. That's why we have a zoning enforcement officer. That's why we publish our zoning bylaws. If you, if you are not 100% certain that the use is allowed, then it's a, it's a, it's a simple email or a phone call or, or stop in and see us. And I, I make my determinations in writing, so it becomes a matter of public record.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else here or go to me? All right, before I allow Mr. Hearn to address this, because I know he has a difference with Mr. Pelletier, is there any other questions from the board members?
Not right now.
Okay. Mr. Hearn, now I know you want to question something, and then I'm sure you have some points, you have some other points for us.
If I may. I mean, Mr. Pelletier just said that if you're in doubt about the use, you come to the, under 10.2 point, 10.1.2, you come to the building department. And 10.1.2 says if there is a substantial change of the, of the use. There was no change of use. The use as a place of business of a building tradesman or caterer is allowed as a matter of right in the manufacturing district. Now, there may have been an error in knowing where that line was, but the unit's plan shows that it was at least partial in it. My client has told me that in the past, the predecessor building inspector allowed the use for commercial purposes when there are other tenants in there. So they were just continuing the practice, the counter ownership, the practice of using this for office-type uses that were allowed, whether it's an office for professional purposes under Part E Use Number Two, or a place of business of a building tradesman or caterer under Point Three of Section E Office Uses. So in good faith, they were doing that. As Mr. Pelletier said, the violations, the violations he cited were the actions, he didn't cite the use of the building for office purposes. There's been no violation noted for that. The violations are open lot storage, what the tenant was doing, and parking of large commercial vehicles, what the tenant was doing, both of which uses were in violation of the, of the terms of the lease itself. Mr. Pelletier keeps talking about the prior matter. That was a responsibility of Mr. Barber, now deceased. He talks about building code violations, but then I said, "Well, that's not really part of it." Exactly. So don't mention it. It's not part of it. I, I want to, you know, I, I want to stress that I never said that 10.1.2 was not mentioned in the June letter. It was. He cited three things in the June letter. 10.1.2 is the third one. But in the September letter that is the basis of this appeal, he did not mention 10.1.2. And if you do the arithmetic on how he calculated the penalties, they're two violations times $300 each per day. 600 times 94 gets you $56,400. It wasn't a one and done penalty. It's maybe a one and done violation in his mind. We don't think it was actually a violation, but we didn't appeal 10.1.2. Got into the legal notice, but it's not the, this is, that's not the decision or order that we're appealing. We're appealing the September order. Now, look, he said the tenant filed at the last minute. If the tenant had filed within two weeks of the notice of violation, he would have still missed the August meeting. So the hearing on September 2nd was the earliest hearing that could reason, this could reasonably be scheduled for. He filed within the 30 days. That is the time for an appeal. So that's, that's just a throwaway line, I think. The, the, I, I want to stress, and I think it should be obvious, that what Mr. Pelletier has cited as the violations in the September notice of violation were the actions solely of the tenant and not of the landlord. Now, also, he talks about, oh, the tenant got months of use, and the landlord got months of rent. Well, $1,400 a month rent. That's not a whole lot of rent, and she got a whole lot of trouble for that tenant. She's here now. She came in September. She had to hire counsel in this. She spoke to her other counsel about an eviction. That explains why an eviction in the courts was not the way to go, as she talked to the lawyer from Bowditch and Dewey. So we're asking you to look at this as a case where a tenant, against the wishes of the landlord, committed zoning violations and should be held responsible for that. But the tenant acted reasonably, the landlord acted reasonably in trying to get the tenant out of there, succeeded in doing it, did not countenance or support in any way the violations. And so to hold the owner of the property liable for that stuff is too, is, I think, unfair. You know, we, $600 a day is wrong. Even $300 a day is too much for what harm was caused and who should be responsible. We don't care if he wants to go after Velasquez for that. That's perfectly fine. And if we find out where he is or pass on where he is, we're happy to do that. But it shouldn't be held against this landlord. And the prior case had nothing to do with this case. It had everything to do with her father. She solved it at the time. And when it was solved, there were no penalties because you abated the violations by getting rid of the towing company. You know, when somebody rents out the property and tells the tenant what the allowed uses are, and the tenant violates it, that's not the fault of the landlord. That's the fault of the tenant. And that's exactly what happened here. So I don't think that it's fair to hold her responsible. She didn't have a windfall by having this tenant stay there. The tenant apparently thought he was going to get this all resolved, but apparently between September 2nd and October 6th, the two hearing dates on this case, he saw the handwriting on the wall and get out of there. He wasn't going to win with you folks. And, you know, and by the way, as Mr. Pelletier, I think, said earlier, if the special permit had been issued, the case would have gone away. That the special permit didn't issue was entirely the fault of the tenant. There was nothing the landlord could have done about that. She wasn't the applicant. She didn't have the responsibility. When we tried to speak about it before you, at the October meeting, we were told, "This is not part of the case." And you were right. It wasn't part of the case. We were sent to the building commissioner, who said in, in email, it's, you know, it's up to the zoning board what to do with the fines. He can't abate the fines on his own, at least not in this case, although I think in the past, they have been abated when the zoning violations have been abated. It happened in the, in the towing company case, and I don't know why it's different in this case.
So it's your position that landlords have no responsibility for what their tenants do in their properties? You have no responsibility at all?
I didn't say that.
How do they find the tenant? That the tenant would think that they could move in there? Somebody had advertised that you could do this there. Who did that?
They didn't advertise, no, they didn't advertise you could do that there. They had an office there that the guy needed and a building to store some stuff in.
And, and, and she said it was okay that you could park vehicles there?
No, she did not.
I want to clarify something.
If you look at the lease.
Clarify it.
I want to clarify something. Those vehicles were for pickup and drop off. No overnight parking and no storing. That's why I put down no storage of vehicles. They had to pick up and drop off because he had, he had employees that worked for him. They would pick up and drop off things. That's it. None, none of it. And it wasn't.
Mr. Hearn said that you, you supplied the tenant with what he could do there. Did you, did you supply him, show him the zoning and tell him what he could do there before he signed the lease?
I did, I told him. I went through a terrible thing. I went through a terrible thing. My father rented this to a tow company, and I'm never going to do this ever again. And even when I was starting to have problems with him, one of the things I didn't get a chance to tell you folks, I was starting to take pictures. I have pictures of those dates before the hearing and before he even applied for the special permit, preparing for a lawsuit.
Did you bring any of those pictures?
I do. I have them on my phone. I was taking pictures.
You didn't give them to Mr. Hearn?
No, I didn't think I was going to need to...
That's fine. I'm not going to look at your phones. I'm not going to look at your phones.
Their timestamp. I took pictures.
Did you fill, did the tenant fill out an application for the space?
No, he didn't fill out that.
He didn't fill out an application?
No. I looked up his LLC, and I called a couple references. That was it.
But no application?
No, no. I mean, this is...
How did he find you?
Someone referred him to me.
Okay. And you don't think you have any responsibility for the tenant? You take the same position as Mr. Hearn?
I've taken a great deal of responsibility with this property. My father being sick and him dying, okay, during the end, and I took responsibility for the prior tenant, and I'm taking responsibility for my legal fields now, and I'm taking responsibility for all the taxes I paid to the town and everything I have to do to fix the properties up. I have two of the properties in my own name solely. I have never had a problem with the building inspector.
And I know, and I know your father knew that he had to get a special permit, because he was the applicant in 1984, so, see, he knew that you needed to do that.
I, listen, anybody who knew my dad knew that he was the one who made his own decisions, and I came in last minute and solved the problem.
Oh, he knew that.
And I can't, I can't, I can't pay for my dad's decisions. And he was impaired.
Thank you. And Mr. Hearn, so your opinion is the fine should only be $28,200. That's your opinion?
No. My fine, my position is the fine for the landlord should be zero.
So she has no responsibility?
No, I didn't say that. But in the past, when zoning violations have been abated, the fines have not been collected or enforced. And in this case, and that was the experience on the towing company case, and I suspect in other cases too, I don't know how many fines are actually collected, they may get issued. I'm saying that even if the worst case were to apply, the fine would be $28,200 on a plain reading of the language in terms of statutory construction. It does not say per violation. If you want to say per violation, you do what the other towns did. You put it in their bylaws. Now, I'm happy to produce those if you want them.
Anyone else have anything?
Mr. Chairman, can I finish on a couple of points? The lease itself, rented premises, the landlord agrees to rent to the tenant the office space municipally described as 558 Pleasant Street. The landlord agrees to rent to the tenant for only the permitted use of storage, office, parking for no more than two vehicles, no storage of vehicles, or large equipment. Further, it says, under Use and Occupation Number 13, the tenant will use the premises as indicated, storage, no changes in use allowed unless approved by the town and unless approved by the landlord, such consent is paramount to maintain the integrity of the lease.
Can you read, can you read where it says that he's only to drop off and pick up cars? Because that's what your client testified to.
It says, it says, yeah, no storage of vehicles or large equipment.
Yeah, but can you read where it says to pick up and drop off cars only?
Well, that's what parking means.
It says parking for no more than two vehicles, parking, and no storage of vehicles or large equipment in that same paragraph, number four, under rented premises. So you make a lease with somebody, you tell them you can use it for particular uses. If he goes off and does something different, that's not her responsibility initially. She took steps to try to end that, and yet, you know, the building inspector is holding her responsible for all of this. Is the building inspector holding Velazquez responsible for it? Because Velazquez is the violator here. My client is a victim as much as anybody else.
Well, it'd be good if we had an application, and what was on the application, but we don't have that.
On what?
An application.
For what?
For rent.
Why? What do you mean, application for rent?
Anytime a responsible landlord rents out a space, whatever it might be, they're going to have the tenant fill out an application.
That's not so necessarily. Commercial uses?
A responsible landlord, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would disagree with you. I have rented, I'm not, we're not talking about residential where you have to check credit and all that. If you know the company or somebody's been referred to you, you know the prospective tenant, you're not going to ask for an application. And I've owned rental property for years.
Does anyone else have anything?
Most of them is the lease.
Anything else? No? Well?
Good.
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Mr. Pelletier, do you have anything else?
No, not at this time.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask Mr. Hearn one thing? Mr. Hearn, if this board was to impose a penalty on your client, isn't it fair to say that she could start an action against Mr. Velazquez for reimbursement?
Perhaps, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
But is it fair to impose a fine for somebody else's violations? That's the real question here. Who caused the violations? And that really is the case. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that the fines be abated. You know, I know at one point, Mr. Pelletier, one of his comments to this board back in the time, I think it was, might have been before the October hearing, he sent an email addressed to you and to the members of the board, and he said, "Some fine of some amount should be assessed here." And he kept, he mentioned that, well, the landlord got the benefit of the rent. I'll tell you, $1,400 a month for the three months that this was going on after the violation. It's not like she got rich on this. So we don't believe anything is appropriate. It's Velazquez who committed the violations. We think that $56,400 is draconian. It is punitive, and we don't have punitive damages. $28,200 is also draconian and punitive. Where is the harm, other than a technical violation that was caused by a tenant, not by the client? 10.1.2 is not part of this violation from September. And as Mr. Pelletier said, that's one and done.
It's in our public hearing. You didn't refer us tonight.
That was, of course, but that's not in the application. I didn't, we didn't apply for anything because it...
Yeah, but the zoning enforcement officer cited the property for...
Not in September. He cited the two violations that remained, and that if you look at the, we didn't appeal the June violation notice because it was going forward under the special permit process. We appealed his letter, notice of violation, his decision in, on September 26th, that cited two violations. It didn't cite 10.1.2. I wrote back to the zoning board and said, when they sent me the draft, they sent me the notice, when they sent it to the newspaper, and I wrote back to them immediately and said, "You've got a couple of things wrong in this notice, and 10.1.2 is not a part of this appeal. We're not appealing that, because there's no penalty that's been assessed on it." The point has been made. We disagree that it really applied here, but it's a warning to everybody that you still should talk to the building commissioner before you do almost anything now. But we didn't, we're not appealing that. And it got in there over my suggestion that it was not part of the case. So we're dealing with the two violations committed by Velazquez. If he wants to fine us $100 for the one and done, as he said, or $300 for the one and done under 10.1.2, I'd recommend that fine be paid right away. But that's not what we're arguing about. We're arguing about the other two. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hearn. All right. Everybody's good? Will we seek a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion has been made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rachel. Rachel on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Closing the public hearing? Paul on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon? Okay, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
I think the $56,400 is draconian, but I think there is some responsibility on the owner. And what that means, I don't know, but I think that's worth a discussion, but I think there's some responsibility there.
Rachel?
I think what I was most surprised about, you know, I agree, the pragmatic approach made a lot of sense to get this individual tenant out as quickly as possible. I think that makes a lot of sense, and I don't want, like, a good deed to go unpunished there or punish a good deed. I don't know what the saying is. But I was very surprised to hear that there was really no written communication, even as informally as a text or an email, directing the tenant to fix the problem and leave, and that all communication was very informally in person and not really preserving that record and those interests, and that's very concerning. You know, I think I'm hearing a lot of reliance on equitable positions here, but at the same time, there's continuity of legal ownership, and I think there's benefits to that. There's also potential liabilities to that, and I think we're seeing those issues here. And I'm kind of curious, you know, what can we look at for the fee on the, on the point of 300 per day total or 300 per day per violation? I mean, I think one way we could address the penalties is without even giving consideration to the legal argument on, like, the interpretation of the bylaws. Kind of look at that as one mechanism of reducing the overall fees. I'm also concerned that, you know, as a continuity of ownership as an LLC and also being aware of prior violations, I am concerned about future violations, and I'm wondering if there's some way we can build in some kind of suspension of a fee that kicks in in the event of a future violation, which I really hope we would never have to see. And that might be one way to reduce the amount that's imposed upfront, but hedge against future violations, which I'm concerned about, and it seems like the building commissioner is concerned about too.
Just a point of information, the property is up for sale presently, so that might not help us there, but just a point of information.
That's good to know.
Yeah, thank you. Paul?
Look, the way I feel is that, I feel like, with the previous, my colleague said, "I feel like the minute notice was given by the building commissioner," because I really feel like the building department should enforce these things, and I don't think there's enough people in the building department to enforce everything. But just to, I think that I would have sent a notice to terminate the tenancy based on, from what the building department said, and then I would have filed an eviction complaint. If I saw those documents right here on my desk, I would say that the landlord acted in good faith. There was nothing she could have done until the court, because you can't just physically remove someone from the premises. You have to have an execution from a court. I don't see that. So I feel like there's some responsibility on the landlord. Now, as far as the amount, I think, I think it's excessive. I think that's excessive. I don't know what the rule of thumb is with this board or how you're going to make a decision as, as to what kind of penalty should be imposed, but I do feel that in this particular case, because there was no legal action taken, I mean, she hired an attorney because she's now facing a $56,000 debt. If she hired an attorney, which she was put on notice by the building department that you're in violation, then I think my whole position would change, because I think she would have, I would say, she acted in good faith, she did what she could, and there's nothing she could have done anymore. So that's where I am. But as far as the amount goes, I don't know, I'm not sure what this board will do. Thank you.
Shannon?
Yeah, I think what I'm finding a little challenging is that when there was the initial, I mean, this kind of started as like a breach of contract in addition to being a zoning issue. There was not clear action taken by the property owner to remedy the situation, and it almost feels like it was a conflicting message to then have the tenant be pursuing a special permit to be able to stay on the property, and it almost sounds like that process was being relied on to perform the eviction as opposed to the property owner directly performing the eviction. And I agree that that is a high amount. I would, I feel like we would need to find something defensible to change that amount if we were to change it, or maybe Ms. Churchill's recommend, like, so I don't have any good suggestions of how we formulate a different amount if we were to change the fine structure, but do agree that there needs to probably be something to ensure that this is not something that would happen again. And I guess if the property is up for sale, sort of future-looking remedies are maybe not the solution tonight.
Mr. Chair, on that point, question for staff. Are you able to look up when the application was submitted for that September hearing? Like, when did that get submitted?
And Alec did it, your recommendation, checked with the town council. We can modify it. And that's what the sense I get, is we're going to modify it, and I guess we just have to override that number.
Just to what?
Yeah, yeah. And this might be helpful.
You know, Mr. Hearn made an argument that, and it made sense, but I don't know what the answer is, is that we can't charge that amount.
No, we certainly can, because that's the statute that the building commissioner's basing it on, and even if you say that 300 a day and just say it's, because we don't have that specific language, but the building code, state building code differs a little bit, but we're not going to make that legal argument. I think we're all in agreement, the highest it should be is $28,200. I think we're all in agreement with that, and then if we want to modify that amount. And I think that's where we're at here.
I also feel that the, Mr. Hearn's client is not responsible for her father's actions. So that, on my decision tonight, has nothing to do with that first incident.
Right, just basically...
This is only from the time the building department was, you know, put on notice. So, you know what I mean? I don't know. I mean, like I said, I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with any number right now. I'm not sure how you decide that.
That's going to be up between the board. The date of the application was a question.
Yeah, so the application was filed on July 23rd. It was deemed complete and stamped in on August 12th.
Does that help you?
August 12th?
Yeah, so some of that was us deferring to making sure that the property owner was aware of and consented to the filing of the application.
And it was submitted July...
July 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so Paul's point, we can take that number of just 94, 300, because it's not specific, and it would be $28,200. But we can also, if someone has a suggestion for a fine that they think would be appropriate, to, I certainly would welcome, welcome it.
I mean, could we, I guess another methodology could be reducing the 94 days to remove the period of time between the submission of a complete application for the special permit process to denial of the permit? If we were saying that the property owner was relying on the tenant to provide all the information to try to bring the use into conformity through a special permit, that fell through and was no longer an option. I'm not saying I fully support that, but I'm just trying to...
Well, you could do that, or someone could just put forth a number.
Right. Yeah.
Or you could just use the, the amount of rent that she collected as a...
Well, we're not sure, we're not sure if she collected...
No, but I'm just saying, but we know what the number was as a penalty. I'm just throwing out the option.
Yeah. I will say, because the board denied the waiver requests, in fact, the application was never complete.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Certainly will entertain any number. Is it the $28,200? Is it something less? You know, certainly, we have the right to modify it. There's, there's no formula according to what town council told us. There's no formula.
Can we agree, can we agree that Mr. Hearn's client, this is a first offender?
Yeah, I don't think that's the question. I'm not counting the other one, so.
Okay, so...
I'm not counting that at all. I'm just looking at it, kind of Rachel's point and your point.
I, I'm...
There's no documentation, there's no application.
I just feel, I just feel like her father was responsible for the property.
Yeah, we're not, we're not. I don't think anyone is, is, is coming into play in that. And, I mean, there's some landlord responsibility here, so if someone wants to put a number out on it, we can vote on it.
I mean, just looking at from the June 23rd until the application for this special permit was completed and stamped of August 12th, that's 50 days. 50 times 300 is 1,500. That doesn't seem nearly like 56.
50 times 300? I think it's more than that, ain't it?
15,000, sorry. Yeah. Extra zero.
Yeah. That's why you're an attorney.
Yeah, I'm not.
Your husband's a man.
It's all true. It's all true.
Okay, so I'll take that as a motion, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would say not to disagree with the building commissioner. I think this is an equitable determination, and so I would propose modifying...
A fine of $15,000.
The imposition of the fee to...
Reduce the...
Reduce the fee to...
Reduce the fine of the building commissioner's recommendation from $56,400 to $15,000.
Correct.
Okay, a motion's been made. Okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second?
I think that is a good rationale that I can get behind between notification and good faith action taken by the party. So I would second.
We have a second. Okay. Rachel on the motion?
Yes.
Matthew on the motion?
Yes.
Paul on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The fine's been reduced from 56,400 to 15,000. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is, um, we spoke of this the last time regarding submission. And Alec, I thank you for the work that you did on this. And I just have to find my, my notes that you provided. Just bear with me unless you have it, Alec. There's no reading, so you can start off. Yeah, I'll grab that. Yeah. So we were discussing, um, last meeting about the submission and how oftentimes applicants would show up at the hearing and say, here you go. Unfair to us, unfair to people that were here that might be for it or against it. So I, I don't want to paraphrase what you did, but you did some work in this. And what is your recommendation to, to us? I, I think it, it cited in the, my suggested language is, oh, that's on Stormwater.
Oh, yeah.
Which I agree, I agree with that.
Um, so I, I actually didn't provide a recommendation, but I did give you all some examples of, uh, from other towns that have language, um, that's more strict than the, our ZBAs current language, which currently is that material submitted later than five calendar days before the hearing may not be considered by the board. Um, and there, so the, the main way that certain towns, um, have, um, something stricter is that, you know, it'll just be a slightly longer timeframe, so seven days or, or 10 days. Um, one suggestion that I made that I saw in one of the other towns was they've made a distinction in their regulations between, um, documents that were substantive and documents that were illustrative.
Yeah, that's where I have a problem.
Yeah.
Because you're going to get that argument that says it's not that, so.
How do you define it?
Yeah, because everyone's got a different interpretation.
Right.
I would just like to see, this is it, and if you don't have it, you get kicked back to the next meeting.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's very fair to people. And you probably agree, been a few of our meetings, but always come up and pass things around and, right? Nobody has a right chance to view it. So, um, I would be more on the, just, what is it now? What is it, what is it now?
Right now, it's five days.
Five days, so if, uh.
And that's calendar days, right? So that's also a lot fewer business days, right?
Correct, yeah. So five calendar days.
We usually meet on a Tuesday, which is like some of that is occupied.
That's tough for any board member. Because if you get information and I want to reach out to the fire department or the planning department or the conservation, you can't get anybody. So I think you need more time.
So, so we, do we, you wanted to say something? Yeah.
Yeah, just, I've been thinking about this because of the timelines and everything and had it in, in the situation where I was most recently talking to the board, there were several continuances which allowed for extra time. The thing that I, that I have problems with current regulations, which say you have to have it in by Thursday night so you guys can get it in your Friday packets for the Tuesday meeting, is, uh, butters are not notified until about two weeks before. So assuming it takes two days for it to get you in the mail, now you've got eight days till the hearing, but only three days till you have to have your, you know, submissions in, right? Now, what if I want to do a, a Freedom of Information request? They've got 10 days to reply to that. So I might not even get the information that I request until the hearing's already over. So that's always my concern in terms of these timelines, unless there's some rule in place that says, um, that if, you know, in certain circumstances, uh, it has to be continued. You can see how, how, you know, you can come to the meeting yourself, but if you can't make it to the meeting yourself and want to make a submission, your timeline is very crunched. And even if, even if, let's say, there were a couple of instances where I did do Freedom of Information things that came after the hearing, but because of the continuums, I had time to incorporate that in my thinking and into additional research. So that's the thing that, that works me when you're going to, you know, or that concerns me, I should say, if you're, if you're going to move back the time when people can submit information, even the applicant and, and the butters, without some sort of guarantee of continuums, uh, because of the compressed timeline that butters have for their notification and doing their own research. And that's assuming that after two days, it's got to me in the mail and I have time to go down to the town hall and inspect stuff or to request it to be sent to me in the mail and then look at it, digest it, figure out what information I want to request additional to, to understand it. So that's.
Sounds like works was the right word. Works was the right word.
Yeah. So we have five days now, right? Is that where we're at now? And some of the recommendations is seven calendar days.
Right, so five gets you to Thursday. Seven would take it back to Tuesday.
What about 10?
That would take it to Friday.
Yeah. So I guess like practically speaking, like I for one am like, getting my packet as soon as possible, if for no other reason than I need to just get my conflicts run. Um, but sometimes I'm busy on a Friday or Saturday, I can't look at it. If I can look at it on a Wednesday instead, like, that's perfect. So if this is going to get our packets to us earlier, question for staff, like, I like that. Um, I guess the one question I have practically speaking, um, is can we just generally make it at the discretion of the chair if it's going to be heard? Because like, I don't want to be forced to have to continue a hearing if we can just as easily take a sheet of paper or something and accept it.
Yes.
On a Friday or a Monday, as opposed to bumping it out an entire.
So we could put this at 10 days and let's say someone submits something, then we can take a vote to allow it. I mean, certainly we have the right to do that. I, I just think we, I don't want, right now, that's the rule and not the exception. I'm okay with it being the exception and not the rule. Uh, so to your point, but I think this puts any applicant on notice that you have to have all your stuff in for 10, 10 days for the board to review it. Now, certainly, to your point, if they submit something, Alex, you can just call me up and say, this is what it is. And if I think we need a board vote, we can do a board vote or say, accept it. But I think your office, it kind of just pushed that, it's 10 calendar days.
Yeah.
And then in regards to the waiver, I really like, you know, we just got a waiver request. Okay? Why? Is it a financial thing? It's a single family home and you're only putting a deck on? So do we allow them to just submit a mortgage plot plan like they did in 84? Or do we get the full survey? So I like that, uh, with, on page two, uh, um.
All right, Mr. Hearn, this is 10 days for the applicant to have the stuff in?
Yeah, everybody, everybody, everybody. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But we can make exceptions, but we want to, right now, it's the rule, not the exception. We want to go back the other way. And I like some of those that if someone's requesting a waiver, identification of the specific item the waiver is being requested from, and the applicant's reasoning why the board should grant the waiver. Right now, we just get, we want, one sentence, request a waiver. So I like that. And I like the 10 calendar days and I, I don't, where everybody is, is everyone comfortable with that?
I prefer getting a packet sooner rather than later.
Yeah, or even if we wanted to bifurcate, you know, because obviously the applicant and the property owner have a subs- they're in control of the timeline.
Yeah.
So putting them at 10 days and 10 calendar days and everyone else.
At five, believe at five.
Five, or five business days or like five.
Particularly for like town Stafford departments, I feel like sometimes that might come in. And it's just an email, so you can read it pretty quickly, but we wouldn't want to exclude that, right?
Would that be fine with you guys if we did something, you know, 10 days the applicant?
Yeah.
Any letters of opposition or in support, five calendar days?
Yeah. So what would likely happen is you all would get your packets with applications early and then you would get an update, say, the Thursday before the meeting with.
Yeah.
Here's all the public comments and so on.
And we do sometimes get like supplemental additions to the keynote anyway, which is fine, and sometimes I remember to check it, but usually you're good at like saying, here's the email with all the new stuff.
This is new.
That's the hard part, if you don't check it after you print it, yeah.
I would just say, instead of no later than, I would say, um, no fewer than X days.
On the.
For either one.
For either one, okay.
Um, and then if we can, can throw in either at the discretion.
Of the chair.
Discretion of the chair or by vote of the board or something like that. Just so that we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Accept later things without continuing.
Yeah.
Are we excluding any of but, any of but is or the public, the townspeople?
No, they, they, so applicant has to have his full application in 10 days. And then that way, the, um, any of butter or anyone can go up to the town hall and look at this and say, I don't like this, I do like this, and get stuff in, they have five days to get it in.
So if, if, if I, if I go out of signature with 175 neighbors opposing a project and I brought it in the day before the hearing, you're not going to submit it?
What I would do is call make sheet.
No, I'm just saying, there has to be some discretion.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what Rachel said, the discretion. But you still have five days to get it in.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's for every.
That works.
Yeah. And then is everyone okay with that language regarding a waiver, that we need a reason why, not just we request a waiver? And it could be a financial reason, it could be, I can't get a survey or until next month, whatever it might be. We okay with that? Yes.
Sorry, I just had a logistical question, because when those postcards go out two weeks before, it says plans are on file. Because my assumption is the application is already there.
Yes.
It is, it is. This happens after the application has been submitted.
So they're submitting additional information.
Yeah, this happens after.
For us to look at.
Right.
Two weeks before they can submit additional information up to.
That, that happens after the fact, after it's been submitted, yeah. Because there's a submission date, and that's what we're changing. Yeah. So that, when you get that, you can go right up there and it's there. Okay, uh, take that as a motion, or can you just type it out and we'll vote on it next, uh, next meeting?
Yeah, so we need an advertised public hearing to formally change the rights, so I will.
And before we do that, do you want to add the, did everyone see the, um, Stormwater regulations? It seems very reasonable, having dealt with this over in Walpole, which has a very unreasonable one. Uh, doing a cul-de-cultech system for a 300 square foot addition.
Wow.
It's like, come on. But I like, uh, suggested language, and Alec worked with this with Gary. A stormwater management design acceptable to the building commissioner shall be included in the building permit plans. It will be designed to capture and infiltrate the runoff from the first two inches of participation from any imperitable surfaces. So that means you wouldn't need a cul-de-cultech, you could have pavers instead of, uh, asphalt. Design calculate, oh, the design calculation gets tough on a homeowner.
Right, so what, what I was referring to was like you take the, the surface area and you multiply it by two inches.
Oh, okay.
And that's your volume.
Okay.
And that's the calculation you show the building commissioner.
Okay.
So you don't need an engineer.
Could we put that in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Specific.
Yeah, because when you see design calculations, I'm like, oh, because in Walpole, we had to get an engineer. And it was 1,500 dollars, it's, that's a, that's a hard burden on a homeowner for a 300-foot addition, yeah.
I guess my question too was like, the general expense associated with these? Like, one of the examples was directing gutters to a very dry well, which I think is like what I did with my addition. It's like a French drain and it just kind of goes underground. That's not expensive, right?
No.
I don't think the whole project was expensive. I don't know if the line item was, but we're not talking like big dollars on this, right?
Right, we don't want, to, to that calculation.
Yes.
Just, that's very simple.
And that's, that's part of the reason why I, I did check in with Gary specifically about cost, because prior to being a building inspector, he did build homes. Um, and so I was asking him, would this be reasonable for you to enforce? And also, would this be reasonable logistically and cost-wise for a homeowner to take on? Um, and he, he did think so. Um, and to Mike's point, like, it's, it's significantly simplified from what a lot of other towns require, where you have to get an engineer and you have to do perk tasks and that kind of thing.
No, I like that. Okay, so you'll take that up and.
Yeah.
Put it out to everybody and then we'll have a public hearing on it?
So, public hearing for January 6?
That works.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the regulations that people want to think about?
Shall we think about now? I think the, I think the one that we were arguing here, per violation, that would be the zoning code, right? So that would be the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just would make a note of that because to clear that ambiguity. You go to the state building code and it's pretty clear, but someone can make the argument successfully. I think David did, that, you know, it's, he doesn't spell it out.
Okay.
So, and he mentioned Metfield, so you might want to take a look at Metfield.
Can I just, um, you know, in the old days, we used to post signs at the property.
Yeah.
Why did we get rid of that?
I remember those, yeah.
Like, if it had been a hearing, if it was a hearing, there's some sign there.
Yeah, you had to put it in front yard.
Like, you could have a neighbor, I mean, if you don't read the papers, then maybe you don't get your notices, who knows? Your mail sits at the post office for weeks and you find out that your neighbor's bought a big addition on it. At least if they had a sign, I mean, is it really, um, I think it's a good thing. That's just my opinion. But why did we eliminate that?
I'm not sure.
That was, that was a few years before you came on board, but I remember.
Could we, could we, could we maybe bring that up for discussion?
Was it like a yard sign?
Yeah, 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 you had to get a yard sign.
And everybody in the neighborhood.
You have to do it in Boston.
Well, everybody in the neighborhood knew that there was going to be change in your neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. I don't disagree, I, but I'm not sure, maybe you can find out why that changed. Because I think it changed with the planning board and zoning board just tagged along.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's why we think.
I just think it's a good thing and it's informative. And it, and it, and some zoning things really affect your neighborhood, and you don't miss